Welcome, everybody. It is June 19th, 2018 at 6:30 PM. We're here for a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to the next item, which is Proclamations and Presentations. And first off, we're going to have a proclamation for our curmudgeon volunteers. This is a group that has been around for a while and does a tremendous amount of work for the city of Laramie each and every week, and we're extraordinarily appreciative of the work they do. So, "Whereas a group of twelve semi-retired gentlemen known as the High Plains Curmudgeon Society approached the city of Laramie for the ninth consecutive year about community service projects and volunteering their skills, knowledge, and labor for the Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas, the Parks and Recreation Department developed a list of community service projects and needs that the staff would like to complete, but due to time and budget constraints, had not been completed. And whereas, the High Plains Curmudgeon Society worked a minimum of one day each week from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM from January to the end of May for more than a thousand hours of volunteer community service completing the projects. And whereas, the community service projects completed by the High Plains Curmudgeon Society included building a roof in the skate sharpening room and completing the wall protection in the arena at the ice and event center, designing and building two little free libraries to be installed by the Parks Division, designing and building a Santa chair to be used by the Recreation Division at multiple events, the removal of the decayed railroad ties at Holding Pond One, designing and constructing additional dog agility course items to be located at the Aragon Dog Park, staining and painting the row posts at the Green Hill Cemetery, fabricating barricades to prevent pickleballs from rolling too far away at the Laramie Community Recreation Center, and yes, that is a real problem. Pickleballs frequently roll away.
Testify to that.
And repairing the restroom at LaPrell Park. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the city of Laramie, do hereby proclaim our sincere thanks to the members of the High Plains Curmudgeon Society. Clint Phillips, Michael Markham, Patrick Parker, Lowell Bangarter, William Hepworth, Donald Leves, Donald Saltman, John Duval, Thomas Howe, Bruce Bedell, Chip Anderson, and George Engen for their estimated 1,000 hours of volunteer community service at the Recreation Center, Ice and Event Center, and City Park Buildings." I would like to invite you, Director Fieser, to come up first.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here to be honoring this group of gentlemen that help us out so much. And first off, if I can say one thing, this year, all their success was based on them. I was busy, and they just took the bull by the horns and actually got a lot of projects done for us. It's interesting to see the list of items, and you see how much they touch throughout the community. It's really important for us. If I've been out in the community and getting to know people, and everybody seems to know this guy named Clint Phillips. And a lot of folks say, "Hey, Clint says nothing but good things about you." And I have to tell you that our whole relationship is because of that amazing man. So, he's really the leader and the heart and soul of the curmudgeons, but he really is one amazing man. One other thing that I did want to note is, one of their members has fallen ill, Pat Parker. His wife had passed away here recently, but he didn't miss a curmudgeon day this year, if I understand correctly. In fact, as a recipient of a text this morning, even though he's in the hospital, that if he knew there was a curmudgeon event going on tonight, that he would steal an ambulance to be here. So, without any further ado, I'd ask Clint to come up and say a few words, and then let's try to snap some pictures with all the guys.
Sounds great. Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I wasn't expecting this. This is the 10th or 12th year that we've been here, and the truth is, we enjoy it probably more than the city benefits. We've got a great camaraderie, and I can speak a lot about volunteerism and what we've learned over the years. But it really comes down to about five or six words. Paul, Todd, Glenn, Scott, and Jody. And the trust that we've been able to develop with them has been really great, and we thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Laramie City Council and the city, let me say thank you very much to you gentlemen. We'd like to take some pictures so we can share this with everybody in Laramie. And I'm going to go ahead and give you the stack of proclamations here. Someone want to come in? There we go.
All right, right here, we'll take two quick pictures. Great. One more. I gotta try to get Jane in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you.
Pictures without me are just fine.
That's what I call volunteerism. With an oxygen ball, volunteering.
Pretty impressive.
So, our next order of business is a proclamation for Bike to Work Day, and I've asked Council Gabriel if he will indulge us here.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been my pleasure. This is our proclamation, "Whereas millions of Americans engage in cycling because it's a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent form of physical fitness. And whereas Bike to Work Day helps to increase public awareness for bicycling, educate the community about the benefits of bicycling for transportation purposes, and encourage people to try bicycle commuting. And whereas, there's a need to promote alternative forms of transportation such as walking and bicycling in order to reduce pollution, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of all people. And whereas, increasing the number of bicycle lanes, paths, storage facilities, and traffic calming measures will help the city ease automobile traffic congestion and encourage a healthy lifestyle for residents." Now, therefore, be it resolved, June 28th of 2018 is hereby designated as Bike to Work Day by the city of Laramie. The city of Laramie, Wyoming furthermore encourages all citizens to recognize the importance of sharing our streets and highways with cyclists. And this is signed by the Mayor of the city of Laramie, Andy Somerville. Is there a representative from Blue Federal Credit Union on hand?
Charles.
Surprise.
It's blue.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, they couldn't send a representative today, but they are aware of these events. They have actually worked with the city of Laramie for the past few years, being Blue FCU and being War in FCU to sponsor a variety of different events. So, on the 28th, they're actually doing three events this year, so this is another expansion from what was last year's two events and what was the prior year's one event. The first year will be a bicycle breakfast stop, which will be available at First Street Plaza from 6:30 to 8:30 in the morning downtown at First Street. They're actually partnering with the, with LCBA, no, with the, no, Laramie Main Street Alliance on hosting that breakfast stop. From 4:00 to 4:30 on the 28th, that evening, at Laramie Depot Park, they'll be having a family-oriented event where families can come on their bike, they can bring their kids there, and they'll be giving out ice cream for free. And then from 4:30 to 7:00, they're doing their bikes, brats, and beer celebration, where for anyone who had ridden their bike to the park, ridden their bike to work, can celebrate in bikes, beers, and brats at the Depot Park as well. Likewise, the city, we always have been working hard to promote this internally, so we've worked with Todd Fieser, who generously organizes a bicycle commute in from Washington Park. We plan to do that again this year for members of our staff to have the ability to bike into work that morning.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you, Charles.
And thank you to Director Fieser and the city staff that are taking part in Bike to Work Day. It's awesome. All right, the next order of business, I believe we have a... Do you want to do the fifth cent under the announcements, or do you want to do it right now?
Announcements.
Announcements, okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearings for the night, then. City Clerk, can you read the notice for our first public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that on the first day of June 2018, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 23 from Mickey M. Corporation, 463 North 3rd Street, Laramie, Wyoming, to Ranger Liquor Mart &amp; Bar LLC, 463 North 3rd Street, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to transfer of ownership of this license will be held Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM in council chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. So, at this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment on this restaurant liquor license application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the second public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that on the 24th day of May 2018, an application was received in the office of the city clerk for a new restaurant liquor license number R-62 for BSD Nepole's LLC, DBA Nepole's 110 East Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this license application will be held Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM in council chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, June 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. So, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this zoning proposal? It's restaurant liquor license. I apologize. Liquor license. My apologies, I was one public hearing ahead. Got a few of them tonight. All right, this is for the restaurant liquor license. Is there any comments on that? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Go to number three.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will meet at 6:30 PM on June 19, 2018, in City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Z-18-01, application by Josh Broman, owner, for the rezoning of a parcel of land approximately 1.9 acres in size from B1 to C2, generally located at 1404 Skyline Road. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the city of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So, is there anybody that would like to make comment on this zoning proposal during the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you move on to our fourth public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council will meet at 6:30 PM on June 19, 2018, in the City Council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Z-18-02, application by Nowbyr Pelkey Mercile Goldfinger, owner, for the rezoning of a parcel of land approximately 8,500 square feet in size from B2 to DC, generally located at 326th Street. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the city of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would care to make comment on this application? Please come forward. You can state your name for the record, please.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, my name is Eric Mulvar. I'm the resident of 319 South 6th Street, which is immediately across the street from the proposed property. This is a bit of an oddball. I think in a perfect world, this would be zoned R2, and Newbauer and Pelkey and Goldfinger would be able to occupy that space as a home occupation. But because of the way that the zoning is written, you have to occupy only one of two floors with your business, so it doesn't work out in terms of this particular case. This property currently is zone B2, which is a, you know, given the residential character of the area is kind of an unsuitable zoning, the requested change is to DC, which is also an unsuitable zoning. Potato, patato. I would not oppose this because principally you're changing from one zoning to another zoning, neither of which is any more disruptive to the neighborhood than the other. Also, the primary reason, as I understand it, that the zoning is being requested is to avoid the need to create off-street parking. I think that creating off-street parking on this particular property, being a very historic two-story house, would be incompatible with the historic character of the neighborhood. And in fact, there's plenty of parking available on the street. We have two churches within a block of the proposed development, and those churches only have a lot of street furniture for parking, only have traffic on Sundays, which is not operating business hours. I can report to you that there are no issues. Plenty of parking in the neighborhood. I'm not worried about losing any of that. So, I don't, again, I don't oppose the zoning change. You know, this might be an opportunity at some point down the line to look at some kind of, you have a residential over business, maybe you have a business under residential at some point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mulvar. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward on this zoning proposal? Please come forward, Mr. Glass.
Mayor Somerville, members of council, I am a, Brett, my name's Brett Glass, as you know, I'm, I live a couple of blocks away from this site, and, well, I understand the predicament that the lawyers who would like to have their offices in this space are in. A few years ago, the city of Laramie, unwisely, I think, abandoned pyramidal zoning. We used to have a very simple zoning system. You could live anywhere, you could work, you know, and if you wanted to, if you wanted to put up with any of the noise or other inconveniences that might happen. It was very simple. Everybody's rights were clearly spelled out. It was easy to understand what they were. Now, with our non-pyramidal zoning system, we have all sorts of overlays and underlays. We have B2, and in this case, we have this, the rob, the residence over business overlay on top of that, which is very confusing because it purports to give you more flexible use of your property, but in fact, it robs you, literally, of some of the uses that you can have because it imposes some of the restrictions from the R3 residential zoning on your business property if it happens to overlay it. It shouldn't, and when I told our community development director at the time, I felt that this was wrong. He said he was going to act on this, but it went through in such a way that it actually restricts you instead of freeing you from some, from restrictions. In any case, I think because of this, because of this unfortunate arrangement, a lot of people with B2 property can't use it in the way they anticipated when they bought it. And the answer in this case is to move to DC zoning, which is not encumbered by the residence over business overlay as B2 property is. So, I'm in favor of this. I don't see any problem with the impact on the neighborhood. Frankly, the expansion of the Ellis Hardy Stevens Center is going to have much greater impact on the neighborhood, and that was allowed. They're also now DC. So, I'd say, go ahead and do it. I really think that we should fix our zoning, our zoning classifications, and perhaps even go back to pyramidal zoning. But in the meantime, I think you should allow this because I think what they're trying to do is perfectly reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. If you could sign in, thank you. Apologize for getting to mention that before. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment? Please come forward.
Mayor and council, my name's Robin Despain, and I work for Newbauer Pelkey Mercile and Goldfinger. And since we had two public comments tonight, I thought I would get up real quick and just let you guys know that I'm here if you have any questions. Though it didn't seem that either Mr. Glass or Mr. Mulvar had an issue with the application, it was more with the existing zoning laws. But if you have any questions about the application itself, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. We can't do questions right now, but we can under the item when it comes up later on the agenda. Thank you for being here tonight. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment on this zoning application? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that public hearing. And we will move on to our next item, which is announcements.
Mayor and council, we have a number of announcements. The first one from the planning manager.
Mr. Teeny.
Mayor, council, I just wanted to make note of, and so that you could put this on your calendars, the city of Laramie, along with heirs and associates, will be having one of its first public open houses regarding the West Side Brownfield Grant process that we're going through. We are looking at July 16th. We're going to be doing a noon to 1 o'clock meeting, as well as a 6 to 7 o'clock meeting to kind of give people two different opportunities to come. They're going to be pretty much the same presentation and opportunity, but we're just trying to give some different ways for people to get there. This will just be the first meeting. This is going to be mostly informational, but also to try to get the neighborhood the information that they need so they know what's going on, when they see people out there, what, they actually know what they're doing, but then also to get some of the information out to the neighborhood so that they can participate in that process. So, the city of Laramie does have a separate page on its website for the Brownfield. This notice will go up there as well so that you can see that. And if you have questions about it, you can read a little bit about the Brownfield Grant process, what it really entails. And then lastly, if you're a property owner in that area and you're interested about the project, or you're interested about maybe having your property as part of the program, you can always reach out to myself, Eric Connor, or Sarah Reese, and we can get you in touch with the right people to kind of start moving down that process to see if that's something that would be helpful, so.
Thank you. Mr. Teeny, can I ask a couple of questions? Will this be advertised in the paper, and will the residents in the area receive any other specific notification?
Mayor and council, we'll do some advertisements. We'll do some social media posts, things like that. We will also be doing a mailing of postcards to, we're thinking it's about 400 people in the whole West Side area, every single property owner. We really want to try to get the word out and get people there, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Council Hanson?
Where's the presentation going to be?
Oh, yeah, actually, I didn't mention that. That's, that's, thank you very much. We are holding those meetings at the Lincoln Community Center.
Because they'll help advertise.
In the gym, in the gym area.
I thought you didn't want anybody to come.
It would be very difficult to show up to an unknown location, so.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you.
A couple announcements as well from Parks and Recreation.
Director Fieser.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I'm not sure if you've paid too much attention to our Facebook page, but we've got two big events coming up this Saturday on June 23rd. The first one is our Touch a Truck event that's sponsored by Laramie GM Dirt Tech, Mountain Cement, and Pete Lean. It's a fundraiser for our youth scholarship fund, and we're hoping to crack over $5,000 this year off that one event. It's from 10 to 1 at the Ice and Event Center parking lot. Each child, as they come out, will get a trading card at the different vehicles, and if the first 200 kids will get a T-shirt or a book to read. And so, we've got a lot of fun things planned. There'll be free inflatables in the Ice and Event Center, and we look forward to that being a very popular event, so we'd encourage you to come out and check us out. Also, that night, we're working with the 150th Celebration. We'll be doing our first movie in the park. This is the first movie of a three-movie series. The movie will probably kick off about 9:00 at the Washington Park Band Show. The movie we're showing is Rango. Before the movie's starting about 7:00, we'll be doing some light music and some contests and having a good time and getting people riled up for the movie, so we hope to see you out there, too. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Saturday's going to be a great day. See you, manager.
Um, council, last announcement, I want to let you know, we have completed some informational brochures for the voting public and for the non-voting public, I guess, as well. In anticipation of the August 21st... Of course, on August 21st, the voters will be in a special election deciding whether or not to renew the specific purpose capital construction penny, often called the sixth penny. In addition, in November, we'll be renewing the fifth cent general purpose tax as well. So, we have some information that we prepared. It will be going out next week in the utility billing distribution for city of Laramie customers. And it is also Fifth Cent Tuesday, so we do have a video about how the fifth cent is used, as you know, for our monthly Fifth Cent Tuesday. Thank you, Mary. Yeah, I wanted to acknowledge two of our Parks and Recreation staff members, if I could, that prepared this video, Tyler Shavling and Devin Stalder. I really, really like the aerial views of some of our community managers. They did a great job. That concludes announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have one further announcement here in honor of our 150th year. We're going to, we read a very old ordinance, every business meeting, kind of looking back at where we're at, and fitting enough, after our Parks video, this ordinance is for the protection of trees. It says, this ordinance is from 1887. It says, "Any person who shall tie any horse, mule, or beast of burden to any growing tree within the limits of the city of Laramie shall be fined some not to exceed $20. Upon conviction of malicious mischief, another $50 can be fined as well." And that was in 1887, so it could be a $70 fine for tying your tree to a horse, or you're tying your... Either one. So, there we go. I don't think that ordinance is on the books anymore, either way. All right, so let's go on to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Item number five, disclosures by city council members. Do we have any disclosures this evening? Vice Mayor?
We have no changes to the agenda this evening, so I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Second by Council Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Vice Mayor?
I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Schuster. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. We will move on to the regular agenda. First item will be Council Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I move that City Council approve the application for restaurant liquor license number R-62 to BSD Nepole's LLC, doing business as... to BSD Napoles LLC, Doing Business as Napoles, 110 East Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term June 20th, 2018, through May 7th, 2019, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, Council, this is an application for a new restaurant license for Napoles. It's the Italian restaurant in downtown. The applicant is here. If you have any questions, the application has been certified as complete by the Liquor Division.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the City Clerk on this application? Okay. Is the applicant present? Would you like to say anything? You don't have to, but I'll give you the option.
Do you have any question? I'm not very good at speaking.
If you could come forward, it sounds like we have one question.
I just have one question. How do you pronounce the name?
The name Napolis? Or my name?
Or Napolis.
Napolis.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because it's an Italian city, folks.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Sounds fair enough. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. Thank you for being here tonight. Are there any comments from the public on this license application? Okay, seeing none, back to Council. Any Council discussion on this application? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Schumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item number 11. Counsel Schuster?
Thank you. Title is Original Ordinance Number 1983, Rezoning One Partial of Land From B1 Limited Business to C2 General Commercial. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1983 on second reading, rezoning one partial of land from B1 Limited Business to C2 General Commercial, and note a public hearing was held on June 19th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Mr. Tini?
Mayor and Council, this item is the same item that you heard at first reading at your last meeting. The public hearing was held this evening as well. There were no public comments. At the first meeting, there was a request by a Council to check into the possibility of B2 zoning, allowing this use. The B2 zoning district would allow this use as a conditional use permit, so they would be required to go through that conditional use process if they, if you were to change the zoning from the C2 requested zoning by the applicant to B2. I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, nothing has changed on this application since then. The applicant is here. He was, as I mentioned during the first meeting, he was traveling, so if you have any specific questions for him, he's available.
Great. Any questions from the staff right now? Okay, seeing none, thank you. All right. Since the applicant was not here last time, I'll give the applicant a chance to speak, if you would like. Is the applicant here for this item? No?
He was there just like a second.
He might be out in the hall?
Yeah. I think he is talking to her.
We'll wait just a second. He's been grounded.
They're like, hurry, run.
They don't have any questions. We don't pay.
Give them the chance to speak if they want to. Okay, then. There we have it. All right, is there any other public comment on this application? We tried. Any other public comment on this application? Okay, Council, any further discussion on this application right now? Okay. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Schumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Onto item number 12. Counsel Schuster?
Thank you. Title of this is Original Ordinance Number 1984, Rezoning One Partial of Land From B2 Business to DC Downtown Commercial. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1984 on second reading, rezoning one partial of land from B2 Business to DC Downtown Commercial, and note a public hearing was held on June 19th, 2018.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Mr. Tini?
Mayor and Council, once again, this is the same as the item that you heard the first reading. At your last meeting, there was a public hearing held this evening as well. You had two public comments. I would like to clarify, home occupations at this location are not permitted. It's not a residential zoning district. As it notes in the staff reports, a B2 zoning district. Also, to be clear, any home occupations that are located in residential zoning districts, you must live at the property and have no other employees. That is not the situation in this location. You are, during the public comments, it was also mentioned that the main reason for rezoning to the DC is, yes, for parking. The B2 zoning district requires on-street parking. The downtown commercial zoning district does not, and so that is a correct statement. But, however, as it was noted during the public comments, there's quite ample parking in this area, and that is the direction in which the applicant is going. I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise, I do know the applicant's representative is here.
I hope.
No, I actually saw her last, as I walked back out looking for the other one, so I can say that now with confidence. So, and I'm sure, as she mentioned, would be happy to answer any questions, if you have any, so.
Great. Any questions for city staff on this item on second reading? Counsel Hanson?
Thank you, Honor. I just wanted to mention that there is, of course, a letter of concern about the parking that you attached to the documents, and I presume these folks have been notified about the possibility that was mentioned before of additional parking in the neighborhood. Am I correct, or is this just standing there? Because the letter is quite adamant about the concerns that have been raised there by this person.
Mayor and Council, the, as Member Hanson noted, there was a letter provided that I mentioned during the first reading from the public. The concern was about parking. The staff reached out to them. One of their questions that they had in the letter was, the fact is residential parking, a residential parking permit available in that location. Presently, they do not have that right now, but it is available if they were to request it. And that seemed to address their concern, and they replied back in our email conversation that that's what they were looking for, and they are aware of the meetings, so, and they have not provided further comment, so.
Yeah, they suggested this residential parking similar to what's around the university.
And it's available in this location. Yep, they just would have to apply.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tini? Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, are there any questions for the applicant's representative? Okay, fair enough. We'll come back to Council. Any discussion on this application? Okay, City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
That carries, so that will move on to third reading. All right, we'll go on to item number 13. Counsel Polikas?
Thank you, Mayor. I got it. I just need to bring it up. All right, this is a fee-for-service agreement for the Laramie Regional Airport to support airport operations. I would move to approve the fee-for-service agreements to the following Laramie Regional Airport in the amount of $121,193 to support airport operations, and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Ms. Reese?
Honorable Mayor, Council, this is an extension of the work session that you had last night, so I won't add too much to this discussion, except to confirm that the amount that the Laramie Regional Airport is seeking is $121,193 for purposes listed within the cover memo. These are also listed in Item 5 within the agreement. I'd like to make a correction, and this is for the airport and the other fee-for-service entities. Item 5C listed here lists a date of September 1st, 2019, as a date by which the entities will communicate to staff a plan for assessing their effectiveness. That date should be October 1st, 2018, so we expect feedback on that topic in a much sooner turnaround. So, what that might look like for the airport is that they would be reporting on ridership and matching opportunities. And, of course, it would look differently for Main Street and LCBA as well. But, I did want to address that correction, and I can readdress it for each agreement, if you like, but I do want you to know that that change will occur before it is executed. Is, do you have any questions?
Questions for Ms. Reese right now?
Yes, I have one.
Counsel Polikas?
The requested fee-for-service this year, what percentage increase is it from last year's award for fee-for-service?
I will...
26.7%.
26.7. So, I hear that is correct.
26.7%?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Or $25,576.
Any other questions for Ms. Reese? Okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner, would, I'll give each entity a chance to address the Council again, if they want, if they're...
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. I just wanted to clarify that last year, we did request, actually did request more, it's just that we were not appropriated more, because we have a big, a large capital improvement project going on this summer, the Runway Project, which is over $5 million project, and we requested more last year, but you guys appropriated less than our actual request.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Skinner? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the public on this fee-for-service agreement with the Laramie Regional Airport? Okay, seeing none, come back for discussion for Council. I know that there may be some amendments here, Counsel Polikas?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make an amendment, and I would like to change the fee-for-service amount to the same amount that was awarded last year, which is, and was, $95,617.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to change that amount to $95,617, and a second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on that motion.
If I may?
Please.
First of all, let me say that all of our agencies, our outside agencies, our fee-for-service, they all deserve more than what we're capable of providing for them. I struggle with this, because given our current fiscal situation, which I believe is about $3 million less than what we had in the last biennium, we have considerably, considerable staff less. I think we've reduced staff by 15 or 16 employees. We no longer have an Assistant City Manager. We no longer have a Community Service Director. We have really had to reduce things down. And it's, it's a, we're just not able to provide what we've provided in the past. Our outside agency funding for this year was exactly the same amount as it was for the last biennium. There was no increases, and all of the outside agencies had to deal with the same amount of money as what they had to deal with in the last biennium. And I just can't personally justify, frankly, any of our fee-for-services getting increases, particularly when we're talking about a 25% or 27% increase. I think it's sending the wrong message to the public, and I just, I just think that that's the fiscally appropriate way to do it. And by the way, the airport is up for the six-cent sales tax, and I wholeheartedly support the changes we're going to make to that airport, and the new, the new facility we're going to build out there, and so forth and so on. But, that's my reason for making the amendment. It's not, it's not an easy amendment. It's never good, it's never, it's not easy to disappoint people. It's not easy to, to reduce what they really need for services, but I think we all need to, I just think it's the right thing to do, given our environment. Thank you.
Other discussion on the amendment? Counsel Schumway?
Last year, the amount that we appropriated, my question is this, did that, was that enough of our contribution to meet the matching funds that was necessary for federal grants? Because that, to me, is critical, that we provide enough for that. And then, should that number be reduced this year? Would that be enough from the city to meet the threshold that you need to acquire all of the federal and state funding that we need matching money for?
Mr. Skinner?
Mayor, members of the Council, what we did last year is we shifted money out of operations. We had requested $50,000 towards airport operations, so we shifted money out of that line item to match the grants. So, yes, we did have enough to, to match our federal grants. We'll probably do something similar this year, because those are high priority, is matching those grants. So, yeah, we, you know, I've been dealing with budgets for 25, 26 years, and I understand the situation that you guys are in. We face the same thing, and we'll work hard to somehow make up that difference.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay. City Clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment, please?
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
That is seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. That amendment passes, so that reduces that amount to $95,617 for the fee-for-service agreement. Other discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I have an amendment. Um, I'm going to introduce this amendment and then explain it. So, I move to amend the City of Laramie Fee-for-Service Agreements with the Laramie Regional Airport to add the following requirement under Section 5C. By March 31st, by March 31st, 2019, provide the city a plan for attaining organizational self-sufficiency, such that funding support through the City of Laramie will no longer be necessary to maintain the regular day-to-day operations of the Laramie Regional Airport. And for background...
Second.
Want to put the rest in, sorry. Counsel Schuster, there's another paragraph under that for the typo, for the contract correction.
You better recheck your date. You said March 31st, 2019, which is already passed.
No, 2018.
2019.
18 is past, 19 is coming up.
March?
March.
19.
Oh, and to correct the typographical error in this section, requiring submission of the Effectiveness Report on September 1st, 2018.
Second.
Thank you. We have an amendment and a second by the Vice Mayor.
And if I may, Mayor, um, this is an amendment that I am hoping to bring for all three entities, and the aim of it is to bring some accountability towards a goal that I have gleaned we all share, which is eventually having these partners have more financial self-sufficiency. From the City of Laramie, as Counselor Polikas mentioned, we're in tight financial times, and to have it in our agreement that we're working with these agencies to lean off of this funding, I think is important, so that's...
Other discussion, City Manager?
Mayor, if I could, just to cover what Sarah mentioned, the draft amendment you read said September 1. Could it be October 1 instead, in deference to the request of one of your fee-for-service partners?
Motion maker in second, is it okay if that correction for the first report is October 1, 2018? Okay. I can do that. So, I, I'll add a couple of comments to this amendment, because I support it wholeheartedly. It is a very scary financial situation that the city is in, and where we have community service partners that are counting on us to be dependable, and we in no way and good conscience can tell them that we are... conscience can tell them that we are dependable in our funding. There are several committees at the state legislature that are working on the specific goal of getting the cities and towns out of the state budget, which means losing our direct distribution. That is a management council goal, as well as a revenue council, Revenue Committee goal, Corporations Committee. They're all working on this goal, and I think that it is possible that we're going to see that come to fruition. If that happens, and there's not a replacement behind it, the City of Laramie will lose several million dollars a year. If the fifth penny is not renewed in November, community partners will not have their funding. And so, these agencies, all three of them, but we'll speak to the airport specifically, are very critical to the operations of this community. And I want to be a partner with them, and I want to help them, but if I have, if we left to look at them as a city council and say, "We don't have any more direct distribution." The choice is public safety, you know, cops and firefighters versus community partners, I don't want to see those agencies fall under. So they're requesting to have them bring some kind of report forward or some ideas or suggestions about how we can help them or what we need to do to be self-sufficient. I would rather be providing them extra money for capital improvements that might not necessarily, if it's not there, collapse the agency and the services that they provide. So I hope the council will support this amendment because I feel very strongly, we need to be very honest with our community partners about the financial situation and what the future holds. Counsel Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to add that I know that we spoke for, or we heard from one of our partners last night about them going from a forty-five percent percentage of their budget being dependent on this funding to twenty-three percent. And I think that's great. I think that's progress, and I just want to see that all of us are trying to move in that direction because I'm afraid if we don't start that conversation, then we won't start making motions to find other sources of funding.
Counsel Polikas.
Just an explanation. So if I'm hearing the amendment right, it's not an amendment to get to self-sufficiency in an immediate amount of time. It's an amendment for direction of these agencies to work to a higher percentage of self-sufficiency than what's been done in the past. Is that a fair assessment?
Counsel Stoner.
Yeah, and Mayor, I'll just add that in this amendment, I don't, I wasn't intending for the city to back out entirely because I know our participation helps with matching grants, but yeah, for us to move in that direction with them.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
If I could just add, I mean, I think we did, we got a really good hint of that last night in the efforts of one of our outside agency groups that we support to have that as a goal, and I, and I really appreciate that. I think we've been hearing that from others, and it hasn't occurred in years. So I think, I think we need to put, put some teeth behind this, and this is, this is teeth behind our desire, and frankly, it should be their desire as well.
Any other discussion on this amendment? Counsel Hanson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is, of course, a specific case where much of the money is match money for federal dollars, and the percentages on the matches don't change. In other words, if we reduce that, as we just heard before, they have to either shift to other sources or reduce what they get in federal money. So, in other words, by giving them or supporting them in this way, we are bringing in money from the outside, federal money, that could conceivably disappear. So I'm a little leery about, you know, even asking them to do that, although I see that we are, of course, in a situation where we may not have much choices. But I just find this particular case, one where the money is really needed because of the percentage that is required to get a federal grant, which is not coming forth if that match isn't there. That's the way it works. So I'm a little hesitant to, in this particular case, Counsel Stoner mentioned that she is looking at the other ones as well. In this particular case, I'm a little leery about this. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Counsel Stoner.
Mayor, I'll just add, I hope that if people are interested in supporting this, that we can equally distribute it among the contracts. I think it'll be a little wonky if it's only on a couple.
Any other discussion? I'll add just real, quickly, Counsel Hanson, that it is, I don't think it's the intent to push away the grant-mashing money, but there's also, for this specific case, there's also operational money that they're, they're in there. So it's just to kind of get that ball moving. So if we do have to defund them, it doesn't shut down the operations per se.
I just hope the ball doesn't run out of the field.
Fair enough.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Mr. Skinner.
Mayor, members of the council, I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify, is this self-sufficiency just for the operating budget? Or are we talking for our capital improvement grant funds? Does the amendment say self-sufficiency for the whole operation, or is it for the matching funds also?
Counsel Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. It doesn't specify, but I think that if there were specific funds that required a government match, that those could be indicated and separated from what could be replaced from other sources. Totally acknowledging that there is some...
Yeah, we currently do that now, and just to clarify, on our operating budget, the money that we're requesting for operations, which is fifty thousand, is 3.2 percent of our total operating budget. But it's, it's a small percentage, but it's a, it's a huge help to the airport.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this amendment? City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
No.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
No.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That amendment carries, so we are back to the main motion of the fee-for-service agreement for the airport. Is there any further amendments or discussion? Counsel Hanson.
Are we going to adjust the figures in item number four because they're still listing at 121?
That was the amendment.
That was the first amendment.
That was the first amendment.
That, Counsel Hanson, that amendment passed, so that contract will be adjusted before it's put into effect.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to be sure that it isn't forgotten.
Absolutely. Any other discussion on this contract? Okay. City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the Laramie Regional Airport fee-for-service agreement?
As amended.
As amended.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number fourteen, fee-for-service agreement with Laramie Chamber Business Alliance. Counsel Polikas.
Thank you. This is a motion for a fee-for-service agreement with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance to provide economic development services and activities. I would move to approve a fee-for-service agreements with the, with the Laramie Chamber Business Alliance in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to provide economic services and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counsel Schuster. Ms. Reese.
I have very little to add to this except for the change to item 5(c), which we become very acquainted with. I would also like to note that LCBA has not requested a change from last year's contract amount. I can answer any questions that you may have. I see that Josh and Mike are here as well.
Okay. Questions for Ms. Reese on this? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Boudreaux or Mr. Peck? Would anybody like to speak?
Mayor, City Council members, thank you again for allowing me to be here. I am happy to answer any of the further questions that you may have beyond the work session maybe weren't answered last night.
Are there any additional questions for LCBA? I see none.
Then I would respectfully request that you pass this as written.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any other public comment on this fee-for-service agreement? Okay, back to council for discussion. Counsel Stoner.
Mayor, thanks, Mayor. I would offer the same uniform amendment. I move to amend the City of Laramie Fee-for-Service Agreements with LCBA to add the following requirement under Section 5(c). By October 1st, 2018, provide the city a plan for attaining organizational self-sufficiency such that funding support through the City of Laramie will no longer be necessary to maintain the regular day-to-day operations of LCBA.
Second.
Counsel Shumway, I think we have the incorrect date on the first one. I think it should be March first, and then the second piece of that.
I, gotcha. By March 31st, 2019, and to correct the typographical error in the section requiring submission of the effectiveness report on October 1st, 2018.
Perfect. Second by the Vice Mayor. All right. Is there any public comment on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, back to council for discussion on this amendment. Mayor. Counsel Stoner.
I'll just say I'm hoping that we can apply this amendment to all three organizations equally.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council on this amendment? All right, City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That amendment passes. We are back on the main motion on the fee-for-service agreement for LCBA. Is there any other discussion or amendments?
I've got an amendment.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, my amendment is to reduce their amount by ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Second by Counsel Stoner. Explanation or anything that you want to say before I go to the public?
No, I think, you know, we heard last night, you know, that they've got some revenue coming in, and I think, I think it's fair. I mean, I could go into more detail, but we don't need to really rehash last night. I mean, they're, they're up, what, thirty, forty thousand? If I recall correctly, somewhere in there. And I think it's just a mere twenty-five percent of their increased revenue, so I think it's fair.
Is there any public comment on this item? Do the applicants want to comment on this amendment? I won't make you. You don't have to.
Yeah, no rehash. I really appreciate your comments tonight, Mayor Somerville, about the things that the city are going through, so I appreciate that. I do think, just for a second, though, it's important to remember when we talk about cost and investment. So when we, when I think of what the LCBA does, I think of it as an investment that's made by the City of Laramie. And by that investment, they deserve some kind of return for that investment, which I believe has been shown. And I believe that with the increase in money that the city makes from the new jobs and from added taxes, that that justifies the investment that they make. So I just, I think it's important that we don't get caught up in cost, even though I'm sensitive to that, I really am. I think about a business owner, for instance, I was, if they're having a rough year, do they buy the new piece of equipment? Maybe they don't. Maybe there's a point where they don't buy that piece of equipment, but next year, they have to buy the equipment, or in year three, they have to buy the equipment. The need for the equipment doesn't go away, and so sooner or later, they make the purchase of the equipment, or the business stops running. So that's the only thing I have to share. I do appreciate the situation that you folks are in and respect the decision you guys make. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Shumway.
Your Honor, in our budget discussions, this exact same motion was made as a budget motion to amend this, and there was quite a bit of discussion, and there was a vote, and the council, I think, made their decision there in the majority to leave the amount of money requested by LCBA at the same amount. I think we're going over something that we've already had the discussion, and I, I know it's, you know, it was in a budget motion instead of a council meeting, but I think, I don't know if there's anything new, but I would like to just have something new come before the council so that we can, if we're going to change our vote, that we'll know what it is, so we make that change, but I've heard nothing new to make me change my vote, and I'm in favor of leaving it as it's been presented.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
I think the new is the presentation last night, so I think it is new.
Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Counsel Polikas.
Yeah. If LCBA was coming before us and requesting ten thousand dollars more this year than they did last year, I would have made the same amendment as I made with the airport, because I strongly believe that what's good for one person is good for everyone. We need to be consistent, but that's not the case. What the situation is, is our outside agencies had the same amount of money to spend on their, on their very, very important and beneficial different enterprises to our community, had the same amount of money this year as they had last year. There was no change. There was no decrease. Airport, we just approved that, the same amount. What I'm saying is, I just, I can't support this, and one of the, a very important statistic that I want to bring forward, and maybe the public's not aware of this, but there was a report that was given by the Economic Analysis, Economic Analysis Division of the State of Wyoming this past year for population changes within our, within our, within our, within our state. And as it turns out, Laramie, as a city, has increased in population in 2017 by 238 people, okay? The closest one to us of all, anywhere in the state, is a population increase by CODI of 49 people. What's the difference? Why are we increasing in population? It's not the university. They've been basically adding up people, and they've been reducing their, both their staff and their, and their, and their professors. It's not the students, because we didn't increase the enrollment.
Yeah, we did.
Okay? So what's going on is very simple. We've created jobs, and we've created 238 new people within our community in one year, better than anyplace else in the state of Wyoming, far, far and away better than anyplace else in the state. So where are we being successful? Right now, we're being successful in economic development, and we're actually, we're actually ahead of the curveball when it comes to economic development, and I just, I, you know, they have to toe the line, just like all the other agencies, but I don't think it's a time to reduce our contribution to them, and I won't be supporting that amendment. Thank you.
Counsel Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I have watched this organization over many years. I'm going to agree with Counselor Shumway and Polikas about they're asking for the same amount of money, and they have a tremendous amount of work to do to bring in some really good jobs, and I think they're, you know, very positive for this community, and to reduce their funding, I think, would be, would not be the right thing to do. And I haven't seen any evidence in our conversations since what Joe has talked about that would really justify any kind of reduction. So I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Counsel Hanson.
Thank you. In line with the concern that was raised by Ms. Stoner, I'd like to know, our contribution, what is it in percentage if we can get that figure of their operating budget? Is that something...
We can ask them if they are prepared to answer that.
We weren't last night.
I believe we asked that. I believe we asked that last night, and I don't think they had those numbers, but...
I mean, in front of a ballpark figure, I just, you don't have to do it to the penny. One-sixth?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
No.
Hanson.
No.
McKinney.
No.
Polikas.
No.
Shumway.
No.
Schuster.
No.
Stoner.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
No.
That is one yes and eight nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion fails. All right, back on the main motion as amended, any other discussion? Or other amendments? Okay, City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the main motion as amended?
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
No.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, let's go ahead and do number, item number 15 before we take a break. So, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the service agreement with Laramie Main Street Alliance to provide economic and downtown development services and activities. And I would move to approve a fee-for-service agreement with the Laramie Main Street Alliance in the amount of 50,000 to provide economic and downtown development services and activities in the downtown area, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Ms. Reese.
Honorable Mayor, Council, with the exception of the correction to item 5(c), I have nothing to add. Main Street is requesting 10,000 more than they had last year, which is a 25% increase. I see that Board Chair Chantel Anderson and Director Sherwood are both here tonight.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for Ms. Reese? Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Sherwood, or Ms., is there...
We're here for questions, if you can.
Fair enough, all right. Are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, all right. Was there any comment from the public on this fee-for-service agreement? Seeing none, back to council for discussion and amendments.
Mayor.
Counselor Stoner.
Going for three for three here. I move to amend the City of Laramie Fee-for-Service Agreements with Laramie Main Street Alliance to add the following requirement under Section 5(c). By March 31st, 2019, provide the city a plan for attaining organizational self-sufficiency such that funding support through the City of Laramie will no longer be necessary to maintain regular day-to-day operations of LMSA. And to correct the typographical error in the section requiring submission of the effectiveness report on October 1st, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and, or an amendment, and a second by the Vice Mayor. Is there any public comment or applicant comment on this amendment? Okay, seeing none, any discussion from council on this amendment? City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, that amendment carries, now part of the main motion. Back on the main motion. Do we have any other, Counselor Polikas?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make another amendment, consistent with what I've been making tonight. I would like to make an amendment that we reduce the fee-for-service agreement to the same as it was last year, which would be $40,000.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Counselor McKinney.
If I may.
Yep. Please.
You know, this isn't about what's deserving or what's not deserving. Main Street and the DDA and that whole group has done a phenomenal, phenomenal, phenomenal job in our community. Without question, our downtown is, is the best there is in the state, and it's one of the best in the United, in the western part of the United States. What this is about is being consistent with everything else that I've done tonight, and it's being consistent with all of other partners. And, and I just, you know, Climb Wyoming, Developmental Preschool, Soup Kitchen, Interfaith, Hospice, the Youth Crisis Center, these are all so, so important, just like our Main Street is and our downtown is, to our community. Every single one of them had to deal with the same amounts as they had to deal with last year. And, and these, these groups that I mentioned, they affect all of us. They affect all of us, they, they affect all of our community in such, just like Main Street does in such a significant way. So, all I'm trying to do is be consistent, and I'm trying to be fair with everything we've had to deal with when it comes to outside agency funding and also fee-for-services. Thank you.
Public comment on this amendment, or comment from the applicants? Okay, back to council for discussion. Counselor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to make two points. The first is, I totally understand what Councilman Polikas is saying, but I do see Main Street as being a little different, in the sense that I see them like LCBA, and the airport is being central to our economy. It's such a central piece to our economy, the investment that we make in downtown. And I felt very confident about increasing this award, even given our particular financial moment, just because of the success and trust that we've built with the Main Street Alliance. I, too, run a small nonprofit, and I am incredibly impressed that this organization has shifted their funding from 43% or 44% of their funding being based on the City of Laramie to 24%, even with that $10,000 increase. To me, that's a vote of confidence to this partner, and to their progress into this eventual goal of kind of weaning ourselves away from this, even though this is an increase at the moment. So, I intend to support the original amount and vote against the amendment.
Other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. I think the question was answered, but I just want to be sure that I heard it correctly. The part, our funding at 50,000, let's say, since we haven't passed an amendment, how much does that represent of your operating budget?
24%.
24%?
How much?
24%.
24%. Okay.
Other discussion on this amendment? Oh, sorry, Counselor Schuster.
Every single one of these groups has been very different between the airport, which I've also been a liaison to, like you are currently now, to our downtown, to our economic development. And I wish we could do more for all of them. Our street budget is approximately 2 million, and we hope that the six cent passes, so it can be a lot more. They recommended if we want to keep the streets at what we are, that 5 million a year is needed. So, the street department's gonna be funded at probably about 38% of what their recommended budget is. And it is tough to do increases for anybody. I feel good about, a couple of the partners have gotten grants, and I know that, that even some of them are going here. So, I mean, I think that's fantastic, because it's gonna ease the burden on us. So, that's all I have. I wish we could do more.
Any other discussion on the amendment? No, Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just think that presentations we've heard from Main Street over the past few months have been very positive. The hours that the staff puts in with one full-time person is, I think, justifiable for this request. They do a tremendous job, and I think, you know, we've got the funding at this particular point, we're looking ahead towards, you know, future years, and asking these agencies to be, you know, looking at more self-sufficiency, but for right now, I think it's important that we send a message to Main Street in that we say, "You're doing a good job, and keep it up." Thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to dovetail off of Counselor Shumway's point from earlier when we were talking about LCBA, too, because I recall, we did have these conversations during the budget discussion, and it seemed like at that time, we weren't really discussing a deduction of this, and that there seemed to be support for it. So, I just wanted to remind council of that conversation.
Any other discussion? I'll add a, oh, sorry, Counselor Shumway, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to echo everything that the council has said, that, you know, Main Street obviously does a marvelous job, they have a great director, and, and they're doing marvelous things for our community. We, we don't let that go unnoticed, because they're doing a super job. I do believe that if we increase the amount that we are budgeting for them by $10,000, it's sending the wrong message to so many of other community partners, including the airport, including LCBA, and all of the other outside agency, where we told them, "We'd love to give you more, but we will not, we cannot, the city is in a situation to where it just can't happen." I, I wish the state would make it possible for us to be more generous, but they don't. And so, I'm gonna vote against the increase. I, I know that it's, it's hard, but it's something that we need to be consistent, so that we don't show favoritism for one marvel, or, you know, exceptional group, and then do not do the same for the other. I think we have to be consistent, so that's why I'm gonna say no. I wish we could do more, but right now, we are not in a position to do so.
Any other discussion? So, I will make a couple of comments here, as the liaison to the downtown. I can tell you that every time I am at a meeting, I am absolutely floored by the amount of work that this group does with very little staff. I want to remind everybody here, we fund LCBA at $110,000 a year, and we, right now, are currently funding Laramie Main Street at $40,000 a year. I think that that is inappropriate. I think Laramie Main Street does a tremendous amount of work in this community, they have stepped up to be an economic development partner, they are now home to many of the tech companies that we have here in Laramie, they are winning national awards, and they're doing it with one employee, who frankly is not compensated in nearly what she should be for the work that she is doing. She puts in 80, 90 hours a week. To what was said in a public comment earlier, this, we need to invest where we need to make the investment. I did not support lowering LCBA's budget for that reason, but they are a much bigger agency with a lot more employees. Laramie Main Street is not. But they have just taken on this year a significant amount of responsibility in assuming all of the responsibility of DLBA. They have heard it loud and clear, we are now asking the director to run Laramie Main Street, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Downtown Laramie Business Association, and we're not willing to compensate them to do it. What they do for this community is absolutely amazing. I think we should absolutely, and I'm gonna ask council to support the 50,000. I think it is a small increase for an enormous amount of responsibilities that they have taken on, and they need to have the resources to do it, or we're gonna pay the price as a community. And if you need an example of that, drive through any other community that doesn't have a successful downtown program, where there's vacant signs in their downtown buildings, there's nobody living there, and ask them where their sales tax base went. It is well documented that any block of downtown far outperforms anything, we heard that a few months ago from Main Street, in terms of property tax and sales tax revenue. Every block in downtown beats Walmart all to heck in what they bring back to this city in terms of revenue directly towards the city. So, I'm gonna ask this council to support their very, what I think is a very modest increase, and not nearly enough for the work that they do, and keep in mind that this is essentially a one and a half-person operation. So, please vote down this amendment. City Clerk, can you do a roll call on the amendment, please?
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
No.
Gabriel.
No.
Stoner.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Somerville.
No.
That is four yeses and five nos, Your Honor.
Okay, that motion fails. We are back on the main amendment, or, I'm sorry, main motion. Is there any other discussion on this, or any further amendments to this fee-for-service agreement? Okay. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel.
On the ma, this is on the main motion as amended?
As amended.
With the...
No, no amendment. That's the way it's listed.
It's at 50,000, as requested, with Counselor Stoner's amendment.
50,000 with the amendment.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Yes.
Start that again, yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, with that, it is five minutes till 8 o'clock. Let's take a 10-minute break and come out, come back and finish the rest of the agenda. Thank you. All right, so we're back, and we're on item number 16. Counselor McKinney, please.
I move to approve change order number four totaling $426,622.08 to the construction contract with Simon Contractors for added costs associated with alignment adjustments, rock excavation, de-watering, and bypass pumping for the Banner Road Sanitary Sewer Outfall Project transfer funds within project budget, and to amend the budget to reflect all project costs.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Mr. Japp, welcome.
All right. Now, my members of council, I have a PowerPoint presentation prepared for you here. We'll get it up here in just one second. Put this together based on kind of some of the questions that came up after the work session, so hopefully we can get everything answered for you tonight.
Much appreciated, thank you.
All right, so, change order for Banner Road. So, to begin with, I'd like to give you a...
Is it working? Right, left? Right, left? Okay, hold on. Okay. Try again.
2.4 million.
Nope, not today. There it goes.
Power is always a good thing.
Power's good? It's just that kind of night.
All right, so, I want to provide you a little bit of the history on this project, as I was saying. So, the original professional engineering service agreement was approved back in 2007. The survey for this job was done in 2008. I'm telling you this because these dates are important as we get more into this tonight. This project is funded by enterprise funds, an MRG grant, and also an SRF loan. When this job originally started, the initial thought was to remove and replace the existing outfall line. It's usually how we do most of our water and sewer jobs, remove and replace. The consultant and city staff began looking at this, or other options, quickly after the initial cost estimate came in, as we would need several times our original budget to afford the bypass pumping, just because of the length of this job, the risk with the bypass pumping with such a large, main trunk line, outfall line for the City of Laramie, that basically was shot down, we just didn't have the money for that. As we continued on with this job, we did look at several different alignments over the last 10 years, throughout its design, besides additional remove and replace. We looked at not just keeping the sewer line in Banner Road, but also running the sewer line adjacent to the road. This was what much of the delay caused with this job, since we tried to negotiate easements, all of which were unsuccessful. So, because of that, the final alignment was chosen to be placed into Banner Road. Backing up a little bit on this job as well, when the first time we submitted to DEQ, we actually had to withdraw the application, and it was determined we needed to install a new lift station right before the treatment plant, before the outfall line could be built. The design and construction of this took place from 2009 to 2013. Utilities in the wrong location have plagued this job from the start of the construction. the construction. Many of you will remember the PFE Waterline Project. Upon initial mobilization to this job, locates were provided that not, did not match the locations provided within the plans. The water line was found to be closer to the sewer line, which created more risk for the contractor during construction. The contractor then proposed building a section of the water line within PFE Road to loop the city's water system to the treatment plant. In the past, we only had one feed that was feeding the treatment plant, and this put the treatment plant at a high risk if this line ever went down, as the water was critical for the treatment of the wastewater. This also increased the safety for the installation of the sewer line, because we were able to turn the sewer, or the water line off during the construction. The contractor gave the city a great price for this work, and the water line had more benefits to the city than just related to this job, but it did delay the job from 2016 until the spring, as this project was, the water line was designed and constructed. So, those are just a few of the issues that's come up, as this project's been designed and bid, but I just kind of wanted to highlight some of the, the main points for you. So, on to the current change order that we have on tonight. So, the job's finally underway. It's going as good as can be inspected, and we received a call from the contractor near the end of April, with an issue, as they found, as they had called in, new locates for the next section of the road. Kind of before we kind of begin, I would like to kind of let you know about locates, and just kind of give you some education. The project locates were not called in for the entire job at the beginning of the job, as this practice is actually discouraged by the one-call agency, as they encourage locates to only be called in for the area you're actively working, so that the locator's time is not wasted, with locates that will expire prior to the work beginning in that area. So, they strongly discourage you not to go call in for several miles' worth of work. They only want you calling in for the area you're going to be working on in those two weeks. Those loc- excuse me, I'm getting over a cold. So, those locates are basically expire within a couple of weeks, so they have to go out and refresh them. So, it's kind of a waste of their time for that. So, at this point, we, in the job, we are starting to approach the pavement section of Banner Road. However, right before the pavement, the water and gas line alignments change, and cross the roadway, creating conflicts with the proposed sewer alignment. The existing gas line was found to be directly in the path of our new sewer alignment for the rest of the job. An easy solution was not seen in the field, so the decision was made to have the contractor pothole the utilities in the area, and work with Tri-Hydro and city staff to find the best solution. Over the next few weeks, city staff and the consultant and the contractor explored several different options. Once updated utilities were drawn, all parties looked at the other alignment options down Banner Road. Because of the curve in this road, and the alignment of the existing utilities, it was determined that this was not an option. We probably looked at over six different alignments and scenarios, but with each one, it was determined to be unconstructable. There was just no option to fit it in Banner Road, so we started looking for other ideas. We again, began looking at a remove and replace for the last little section of the sewer outfall line with bypass pumping. This was going to be over $7,000 a day, on top of the cost of the sewer work. This was because of the size of the pumps needed to bypass the outfall line, and also the monitoring of the pumps and the risk. When the time, with the time needed to finish this project, this would have almost doubled the project cost, based on the estimates that we had brought forward. We then began looking at different alignment options not in Banner Road, both in city right-of-way and off of city right-of-way. A few different alignments were discussed, but the easiest and cheapest alignment was to found to be in Colling Street and Carroll Avenue, and then this will eventually tie back into Banner Road. While staff was in the process of exploring all these options, we also began having discussions with Love's Travel Center. The new alignment would affect their business, as it was adjacent to their main entrance, and they were getting close to opening. After several discussions with them, it was determined that if the work in the area can be done by July 19th, it would not affect their opening. It was because of this, that staff gave authorization to the contractor to begin the work on the proposed alignment immediately, so we would not impact the opening of Love's. This work is currently being done under the existing contingency in the project. However, this change order is not approved here tonight. We'll have two ends of a sewer line that will not be able to connect together, and basically make it unfeasible, until we could continue this project in the future. The only reason why this does, was done so quickly, and we took action, was that the city would not impact the opening of the new Love's Travel Center. One final option that was looked at by staff was just stopping the job where we were when we found the issue. That was an option. We had an option to tie in at that point, and then we could continue as a future project, as funding would become available. Because we had almost $900,000 remaining of our almost 1.5 million grant and loan, which would have to be returned back to the agency as the project did not continue, staff felt that this would be a poor use of funds, and we would have, we should find a way to finish the project, since so much of that money was riding on that. So, it was from all these factors that staff chose to change the alignment to what is currently being installed, and bring the change order before Council tonight. So, this exhibit that we have right here, the green line that you're seeing is the, was the original proposed alignment for the Banner Road sewer outfall line. It basically followed along Banner Road. The line you see to the left there, that is red, is the new proposed alignment. As you can see, it does tie back into Banner Road at that location. They are currently working on the north-south, so the, the up-and-down section of it, and that is actually where they are installing it. The contractor has jumped ahead. They took on that risk, and that risk is kind of incorporated into this change order, but they, they jumped ahead to try to meet the Love's deadline, of trying to get the work, they're going to be out of their entrances. The project is currently on task and on schedule to be done, and we will actually have the line tied in to Curtis Street, where the project is actually ending by that July 19th, if everything goes correct. So, we're pretty much almost in daily communication with Love's, giving them updates on these projects. Willie Winkler, our project manager, talks with them quite a bit. They're getting ready to pour some approaches into Love, so it's not delaying that and everything else. We will do a temporary tie-in manhole at the corner banner, and then we'll keep feeding into the old line, and then we'll have to go in there and pull a plug, once the rest of the line is finished. So, we'll still have to run the east-west section of the red line, and finish down to the pavement, after we finish the area in front of Love's. So, that is still going on.
No, yeah, that's just his arrow, arrow.
Just telling you what it was.
Um, so, one question I know, that you guys are all probably wondering, so, who's at fault with this? Really? There's a lot of finger pointing going on. Could, was it the consultants? Was it the locators? Was it the city? The answer really is yes, to all of those above. You know, this job's been going on for 10 years. The finger can get pointed around quite a bit, as this job progressed, progressed and everything else. It was because of that, that everybody involved looked for a solution to the problem in front of us, rather than trying to find the blame of the project that has been going on for over 10 years. So, that is kind of my answer on who's at fault. There's a lot of people who are at fault of this, where we're at, where today. Before we kind of, I answer any kind of questions you may have, I want to request that you amend the motion. We had the budget motion that was brought before you last week, when you guys approved the budget, and that was for $400,000. The actual amount for this change order is $426,622.08. So, if you could, if you would be willing to amend the budget to reflect that amount.
And to clarify, Mr. Japp, we went ahead and added that on to the main motion.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
It's right here.
That sounds great, so it's taken care of. So, all right, with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Japp?
I'll take care of the 8 cents. Another question, thank you. I mean, some people wanted it explained, and you explained it last time, and it was going to affect the opening of a business that's going to generate a huge amount of revenue, that it's like, okay, we've got to do this. We've got to keep going, and it's helping out the entire city, but it's helping a business too. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious about the grant funding. How long does that go on, and how long can you delay a project and still spend those grant funds?
Um, Your Honor, Mayor, Councilor Gabriel, we're pretty much at the end of that. That grant's been out there for 10 years. It's not been looking very good, so that's why, you know, we've been really pushing to get this job done. They've been very patient with us, but the patience is quickly running out, so we are pushing to try to get this job done. I mean, they're not going to pull the money from us, as long as the job's continuing, but if this job was delayed or anything, that money would be taken away instantly, and it would not look very good for the city, in that sense, to have a grant hanging out there for 10 years, and then basically not finish it.
Thank you.
City Manager.
Um, Mayor and Council, to your question, Councilor Gabriel, I wanted to address this point as well. The state has been carrying portions of this grant on their books, as Eric said, for a very long time, and, and I would say, we have had to, in recent years, actually answer question, I mean, and then the state's been very patient, recognizing that other mandates have come up relative to this project, that had to create projects that would precede the actual Banner Road construction occurring. In any case, we have actually had our eligibility for new funding questioned, because the state rightly has said, "Well, if you can't get the projects we funded done, why would we fund new ones?" Which is a very fair question. In this case, it wasn't our fault. It was, you know, really more other requirements that kicked in relative to this, and so whatnot. But they've been patient. I just, I wouldn't push it out any further, because it could compromise other eligibility for new funding applications, for sure.
Other questions for Mr. Japp? So, I have a, oh, Councilor Hanson?
It strikes me, when you look at the whole amount, that changes peanuts, you know, even at that amount. I mean, it's, what is it? It's almost a $3 million project. Yeah, we better finish it, you know. It's, yeah, I know there's this expression of throwing good money after bad, but we're not really doing that, you know. We're getting something for it. I was thinking of the finger pointing. The middle finger would have been more appropriate. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Japp, I have a question for you. And so, I appreciate the explanation about the locates, because that would have been my first question as well. Don't we go out and do all this first, for the whole project, before we get started? So, kind of having gone through this process, is there anything immediately that you guys have talked about changing processes or procedures to better, to help this, so that this doesn't happen again? Because this is a fair amount of money for-
Your Honor, Mayor, the, those changes were actually made several years ago. As, and I should have mentioned this, and I meant to in part of my presentation, you know, this, this job was designed in 2008. That's when all the locates in the survey was done and everything. Around that time, in our construction, we started noticing this issue, usually in much smaller amounts, but all throughout the city. We now require potholing for all city jobs. So, we go through, we meet with all the franchise utilities. We actually have in our RFQ for our consultants, that they actually have to have the franchise utilities review the plans and sign off on them. We require, like I said, we require potholing. You know, we usually end up spending, it can be anywhere between $30,000 to $50,000 of potholing prior to a job, but what we have found is that because of the issues that come up with this, the design complications, trying to figure out where to put a line in the field, rather than working on a, off a set of plans, that the benefits far outweigh that. So, we have a pretty extensive potholing plan, you know, an average few blocks can contain 20 to 30 potholes on a project. So, this issue's been addressed, however, this project's been going on for so long, the issues of past is still there.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, and I appreciate, you know, this is a 10-year-long project. It's been going on for a while, but for the public's information to know that we already have changed processes and procedures, and are treating things differently. So, hopefully, as we kind of get through this, any, any other older projects, that this won't be going forward. So, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor.
So, I apologize, but define potholing formally.
So, Your Honor, Mayor, Councilor Pierce, what a pothole is, is we call for locates out in the area.
Okay.
They then either use an airback truck, or a jet truck. Both would, one will either use air to dig, or one will use water. They will then dig down a hole, probably about a foot in diameter, you know, if the locate's on. They'll dig down to, until they find that service. It's, it doesn't damage the utility or anything like that, and then they will go out and actually survey in the elevation of that. That helps quite a bit. One, we get the, the horizontal, and we also get the vertical. The horizontal lets us know kind of where that line is, you know. Lines can move, so it's not perfect, you know. There's a limit to how much you can really pothole, you know, so issues can still come up. But that also gives us that vertical that is out there. So, if we have any kind of conflicts with a proposed water line, you know, water line crossing, where you have to drop 45s, can add, you know, $5,000, $10,000 to a job, but you want to try to avoid as a change order. So, that is basically what they're doing when they go out and pothole. So, we work with the engineers and city staff, look to try to determine where the areas where the most conflicts may occur, and from what we have in experience with that.
Please.
So, can you say generally, we pothole every six feet, or we, I mean, is there like a rule of thumb, so a person knows that they're going to be doing X amount of potholes, or do you just, "Well, this one was here, and we learned this, and now what do we do?" Right?
Yeah.
I mean, how do you-
Your Honor, Mayor, Councilor Pierce, a lot of it's based on experience of what we've seen in other jobs, but, you know, if, say we have a block, and we have a water line, a sewer line, a gas line, possibly a fiber optic line. What we'll do is, you know, we'll go out there, we'll call for locates. We might hit the very beginning and end of the job, for like the gas line or the fiber optic, to see where that, make sure that alignment's actually in the correct location. But if there, if we notice any crossings, so say there's an intersection, and there's a water line there, we may be concerned with that water line of going under, you know, another utility or something. So, we'll pothole where that actual cross of those utility lines are, possibly before. You know, with the sewer line, we can go and dip the manholes, which is basically sticking a tape measure down it, and getting the depth. You can then get your elevations of the manholes. There are ways you can dip water valves, the same, and estimate based on the size of the valve, on the elevation of that water line. So, we try to do some things like that, because potholes aren't exactly cheap, you know, you're spending a few hundred dollars on each pothole. But basically, what we do is, we try to get a set of plans, identify where we need to, potholing to find out exactly where those utilities are, to make sure that they are confirmed, as on the alignment, but then we also will take a look and see where any possible conflicts could be occurring between utilities, and we'll go out and pothole those locations.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Japp? Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and the information.
Pot, like, like a real pothole.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Then go down.
Any council discussion on this item?
No, it's not.
I'm really good with manholes.
Okay, no discussion on this?
Right.
We don't want to tell the public, we're deliberately putting more holes in the streets. They're already there. All right. City Clerk, can you do a roll call on this, please?
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, let's go on to item number 17. Councilor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance number 1985, and let me just say this. Normally, when we introduce an ordinance to the city council, it takes three readings. There are, there is a provision that if we deem it necessary, there's an emergency ordinance, which can be done in one reading. So, I'm going to make the initial introduction to this ordinance with, with that in mind. I move that the provisions of Wyoming Statute 15-1-115, parentheses C, be suspended for the consideration of an emergency ordinance. Ordinance number 1985 authorizing the refinancing of specified water system loan, for the reason that the bond market may change over the time period, to have the city of Laramie, Wyoming, conduct three readings.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Vice Mayor. Director Brown.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give a brief history, and then maybe invite Mr. Todd Bishop up to talk about the process. But basically, we have worked on the raw water pipeline. The raw water pipeline was a project, a big 36-inch pipeline, that it was completed in '17, and that's when the loan with WWC, Wyoming Water Development Commission comes aboard. It's a 4% loan. Normally, we go and refinance this loan to save money for the water, water fund. And so, in order to do this, the bond market changes, it's actually changing rapidly. We have to do an emergency ordinance, and so it's a normal thing that we've done on all our loans. But I would like to bring up Todd Bishop, and talk about some of the process, and what kind of savings we did, do on this loan for the, for the-
City Manager.
Mayor, have you moved the main motion?
We have not yet.
Okay.
Do we have, we have to do two motions?
We do. Yep, so we need to...
So, we have to wait for that?
If we can wait, that would be great.
Sure, okay.
So, right now, the only thing that's on the floor is the authorization of an emergency ordinance provision. So, is there, City Manager, is there anything else you wanted to add to this first motion?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this? Okay, any discussion by council on this? We have to pass this to be able to go to the second item. City Clerk, can you do roll call on this?
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you, that motion passes. Counselor Shumway, would you read the second motion, please?
Thank you, Your Honor, I will. I move that ordinance number 1985 authorizing the refinancing of specific water loan and the issuance by the city of Laramie, Wyoming of water refunding revenue bonds, Series 2018, in a maximum principal amount of $3,222,000, for the purpose of refinancing the city of Laramie, Wyoming's second renewal promissory note, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the pledge of revenues to pay the principal and interest thereon, providing other details in connection therewith, and be passed on an emergency, waiving three readings, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, and require the ordinance published as soon as practicable following the meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, and just for clarity, we said $3,220,000, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bishop, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I will be brief with my comments. The ordinance before you in this process, I would liken it to the refinancing of your home mortgage. We're simply replacing a higher interest rate loan at 4%, and we're going to replace it with a 3% loan. We're going to take approximately 10 years off the time, but this debt is going to be outstanding, and in the process, the city is going to receive net savings of over $1,208,000 by doing this. So, you know, I know that an emergency ordinance can give angst to a council at times, but the bond market is not unlike the stock market, in that it changes on a daily basis, and in 45 days, or the process from a first reading to a third reading, a 25 basis point increase in the market could, well, it could be $200,000, $300,000 less in savings that we'd be looking at. So, I appreciate your consideration for this approach tonight. Over the last 60 days, the city staff and I have worked through this, and we had sent out a packet in May to all of the banks in Laramie and banks in the region, and we received their interest in actually bidding on these bonds, and so really excited, we had great participation here locally. We ended up placing these bonds with three banks, A&amp;B Bank, First Interstate Bank, and Wyoming Bank and Trust, and so all of the bonds were subscribed for. Just really excited to have that sort of interest and participation in this process. Given your approval of the ordinance this evening, there are some closing documents that will be needed to sign, and I'll coordinate with you, Mayor, and this transaction will be wrapped up and closed on the 28th of June.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bishop? Mr. Bishop, thank you for coming up and presenting, and for the work that you've done with this. If there's any reason for an emergency ordinance, it would be a million dollars.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, in savings, that's right.
Thank you, Todd.
Is there any public comment on this item? City Manager, did you want to add anything else to this?
Nope, they've done a great job.
Covered it all, alright. Discussion from the council on this item. Alright, City Clerk, remembering this is an emergency ordinance, one reading only, we do roll call, please.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
That motion passes, thank you very much. Alright, item number 18, Counselor McKinney.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2018-D38, setting the right-of-way encroachment business permit fee schedule and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Counselor McKinney, can you put the motion for postponement on the floor?
I move to postpone this.
To August 7th.
Where do we put it on? August 7th.
2018.
2018.
Right.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster on the postponement. City Manager, City Attorney, did you want to comment to the postponement?
No, thank you. Should have stood up.
For what you volunteered for.
You were confused.
Alright, is there any public comment on the postponement motion? Discussion by council, and for everybody's information, this postponement motion is going forward, because we have a little bit more work to do, and some things coming forward that'll start in July around this, so we'll bring this back in August to finalize everything. Any other discussion by council? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please, on the postponement?
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries, and that is postponed till August 7th, 2018. Alright, item number 19, public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make comments tonight? Seeing none? Alright.
I think they're thinking.
Is there?
No.
No? I think they're just here to hang out.